Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of police call the roll?
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Forsythe.
Present.
Uh, approval or corrections to the minutes of the August tenth, two thousand fifteen regular village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept is presented.
Motion second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Present.
Minutes of the August eighth, two thousand fifteen special village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Hupkey.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Present.
Minutes of the August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen special village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Bowden to accept the minutes of the August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen special village board meeting.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Present.
Mr. March.
Yes.
And Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, uh, payroll pay period ending eight fifteen, twenty-five thousand, three thirty-seven, ninety. Accounts payable, general fund, fifty thousand, five sixty, eighty. Motor fuel tax fund, twenty-two thousand, seven forty-four, twenty-six. Water sewer fund, thirty-eight thousand, nine eighty-seven, thirty-seven. Capital improvement fund, one thirty-nine, ninety-nine, giving a total of one twelve, four thirty-two, forty-two. One hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Are there any questions or discussion on any of the bills?
I have a question.
Okay.
For Donald L. Swanson, Jr., we have a amount of three eighty. Can you tell me what that is for?
It involves some, uh, work in the police department for our, uh...
Computers?
Computers and some stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
I make the motion, we pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Hack.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? We will move on to reports of committees in your packet. You have the clerk collector report and the treasurer's reports. Is there any questions or discussion on any of those? We'll move on to public works committee.
Um, public works met August twelfth. There was just a couple of things on there. Downtown snow removal, we discussed again after two years. I think we've decided that we want to recommend leaving it alone, going back the old way, um, but try to make some contact with some of those business owners downtown to explain to them how beneficial it is to remove that snow. And also, public works has also agreed if we have a substantial amount of snow, um, they're gonna try to do what they can with the loader or the pickup truck plow. Uh, the street patching project, that fifty thousand dollars we had in there, uh, Mr. Hanky has most of the areas marked out. He might even have them all done by now. Uh, there, he said there was one, one bigger patch that he wanted to do six inches deep and the rest were all gonna be four inches instead of six to try to get more done. Uh, it'd be cheaper. And he said most of the streets in town aren't, aren't deeper than four inches asphalt anyways. Um, the Wilmington Roads sidewalk was the last thing we discussed and, um, after talking to engineering, I think that price basically went from a hundred thousand when we started this a couple of years ago to about a hundred and forty thousand now to complete if we wanted to do it. Uh, trustee Jones had actually brought up maybe looking at a debt certificate to do all of the missing sidewalks in town, including that one. Um, do it all at once so we can get a quantity price. And then, the only other thing that came up under general discussion was Bonnie Lane, that project out there, the drainage projects complete, so, that's it.
Uh, building committee.
Uh, building committee met on August twelfth. Our main topic of discussion was the, uh, we're currently using the two thousand building codes. Uh, there've been several updates to the code and we want to meet with the, uh, code enforcement person and talk about what the updates are on the new code.
The inspector.
Inspector, yes.
Yes.
And see what they are and then make some decisions based on that. Um, another topic that came up was, um, we're noticing still a lot of trees over the sidewalks. Uh, seemed like a lot of people responded pretty quickly, but there's still a lot to go. Maybe we need to put that on the Facebook or in the paper or make an announcement this evening.
Yeah, we can do all, all of the above.
So we can get, uh, more compliance because it's looking better, but it's still got a ways to go.
And that is, how many inches above the sidewalk?
Seven feet.
Seven feet.
Eighty-four inches.
Thank you. Just making sure that it's clear.
Um, let's see. One more item that came up was, uh, we had somebody that had a chain link fence that, uh, was in pretty bad shape. Uh, we thought our ordinance stated that if it's more than fifty percent, um, it probably should be taken down and come into compliance with village ordinance. So we might want to discuss that with code enforcement.
Okay. Why don't you get that, get that addressed so we can forward that on the code enforcement?
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Administrative oversight committee.
Administrative oversight committee met on August nineteenth. Committee reviewed the amplifier ordinance for possible amendments. Uh, chief Mort gave an overview of the, overview of the O and M licenses. He explained that an amplifier would be needed, uh, for any outdoor amplification in addition to the other licenses. He stated that, uh, we have one of the most aggressive liquor regulations. He was asked if, um, the fair got an amplifier permit, the response was no. The prices of the O and M licenses were questioned regarding the price being the same for one event license as the full year and also changing fees or eliminating one of the event licenses was discussed. Chief had suggested waiting until the next time the liquor ordinance was changed. Um, I had suggested changing the price of the commercial amplifier permit to, um, one hundred dollars from two fifty. Uh, the next item was a review cable franchise and solicitor ordinance. Uh, excuse me if I have mispronounced your name, but Mr. Maxidon.
Maxidon.
Maxidon had requested ninety days to solicit, uh, new Comcast products in the village. The current solicitation ordinance allows three consecutive days with no Sundays, once per year. The committee discussed a cable franchise for any provision, um, for solicitation, none were found. The solicitor ordinance was reviewed. I had suggested that we change our current solicitation from three consecutive days to ten. Mr. Bowden didn't think solicitors were beneficial. Mr. Jones didn't like telephone solicitation. Uh, the clerk explained that the ordinances, organizations like the Girl and Boy Scouts come to the board for permission to canvass the village during specific timeframe. Also, the chief, uh, would research other towns for their solicitation, um, regulations. And, um, the next thing was the, uh, general phrasing for changing the amplifier fee structure was discussed reviewing regarding, I'm sorry, the new fee would begin from the passage of the ordinance. And then there was some discussion of purchasing a decibel meter for noise control.
Any questions or discussion on any of those committee reports? Now, we've got a couple of things coming up on the agenda in regards to that. Chief?
I'll be for it.
Engineers' report?
Um, sidewalk program has been complete, at least all the site, the concrete has been poured. There may be some restoration left, other than that the, the sidewalks all in. We're good, that's it.
No old business, we'll move on to new business. Home occupation permit, John Bavara, four hundred West Corning Avenue, J and G Decorating.
Me, sir?
Yes, could you step up to the mic, please? How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. So this is Mr. John Bavara. He's applied for a home occupation permit for four hundred West Corning. This is an interior and exterior painting contractor. Uh, we have hours and days of operation, six-thirty to four-thirty, Monday through Saturday, and at one location, no customer parking needed. Uh, trustees, questions for Mr. Bavara?
How many people do you have working?
Choose me.
Where do you store your equipment? Ladders?
Pretty much, it's all in my van. Besides the few layers, keep a few extra layers in my garage, other than that, everything stays in my van. Most of my materials are all bought. Customer, you know, based on what the customer wants, buy per job, they usually get the leftovers, you know? Don't really have much store, you know, don't have the room to store much in there.
Any other questions?
Can you give us an insight on the six-thirty to four-thirty hours?
It's, it's...
Just you, you working at that time?
For the most part, I mean, it varies based on the job, but for the most part, it's don't usually work much earlier or much later than that, you know?
No deliveries made to that location?
No, no, no.
You don't pick up materials?
It's all bid the job, pick up the material at the paint store, go do the job, customer gets what's left, you know? Mostly all residential repaints.
Wasn't your dad in this business?
Yeah, he just moved to Texas.
Are you taking over his business?
Well, I didn't take his name, but, yeah.
His customers?
Yeah, right.
How long you been in business?
Just trying to get started, really, since he up to, um, beginning of July. Doing a little bit of work here and there and just trying to get everything legit and legal, you know?
So as far as equipment, it's just one van?
Yeah.
And then whatever you store in your garage?
Right.
Okay.
I move we, uh, accept.
Second.
So a motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve the home occupation permit for John Bavara.
Mr. March.
Can I read you?
Thank you.
Mr. March. Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
All right.
Item B, Comcast cable request, extended solicitation of the village from eight fifteen to ten fifteen. Current ordinance allows three days?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm Thomas Roberts. I am a resident of Peatown, so is John. Um, we both, um, we've been longtime residents of Peatown. I've done soliciting in Peatown before the ordinance was changed. Um, ask your question.
I think the concern, you know, was your original request was ninety days, which is...
Well, I'll be honest with you, when they give us a turf, they give us a turf for ninety days. They gave us the turf back in August. We only have it till October fifteenth.
Who are they?
In July, our bosses.
Comcast?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so they give, right now, we have, we have a Bradley turf, we have a Burberry turf, and we have a Timely turf, and we have a Peatown turf. Um, we only have fifty-four days left on Peatones. So, when we ask for a solicitation permit, we're not out there every day from eight in the morning until eight at night. We might hit Peatone for two days this week and then go to Burberry for two days. It's just a matter of, like, when they give us Peatone, there's, right now, there's about eight hundred, between eight hundred and nine hundred addresses that we've got that are what we call non-subscribers in all of Peatones. Okay? If you look at the, you guys have looked at the franchise agreement, you know that, um, for every Comcast bill, and it works like that, it's not just Peatone, every town gets a cut of the Comcast bill called the franchise, franchise fee. Each town is different on how much they get. Um, I think Peatone gets around thirty-eight thousand, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
For, uh, two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, we had the total of sixty thousand, five seventy-one.
Okay.
And for this year, to date, thirty thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Sounds about right. I mean, you, you guys could look, anybody who has Comcast could look right at your bill and the item that's on there, so you know how much you get from Comcast. You're right when you say that the franchise agreement from Comcast, and I don't have any authority to, to negotiate the franchise agreement, you're right when you say that nothing in there says that you, there's a quid pro quo, because you do that, you have to allow us to solicit. That's not there. Okay? We're just asking, as residents who know the town, who know the people, who know the benefits of our product, that we would like to extend that product to as many people as possible. Um, and through that, Peatone sees the benefit because everybody who switch over from Direct TV and Dish Network is a little bit extra towards that franchise fee.
Could, can you give us some insight into the, what are you soliciting? What are you selling? What are you asking the residents to participate in?
The products that Comcast has, we, we have, um, TV, internet, telephone, and home security. All of these are our licenses for everything. Okay? Um, you had mentioned wanting to know what other villages do. I can tell you every village round here exactly what they do.
I have things from Mantino, I have, uh, uh, things from, also feature, I have some of the...
Yeah, and I have a feature license in the car, I have Bradley right there, Burberry right there, Timely Park right there. Um, Mantino is twenty-five dollars a month and, or a year and fifty, fifty cents per day. Um, or thirty, they might have bumped it up to thirty-five. But, on average, what happens is, all townships do have an ordinance regulating solicitation, which is a good thing. Okay? We're not trying to get you to overturn that. Okay? What we would like to do is, through a regulation, be admitted for a certain period of time, and then when we're done with that time, we're done. Okay? You could do it however you want. You could say, um, Burberry, for example, you go in there and you apply once a year, they run fingerprints, they do it through the live scan, okay? They get the fingerprints back in a day, and then every month, you have to come back in there and renew. So it's not, uh, here's a license for a year, it's a, here's a license for this month, and then in one month, you do it again. Bradley's a year, Timely's a year, Oak Forest is once, once a month also. So, we're just asking for a little bit of leniency. I know that some people sometimes have a, have a reticence about allowing solicitation from one vendor, thinking, well, if we open that door, it's gonna open the door for others.
And, and I guess that's one of my questions to the attorney, is there a way, that's up to the board, that we could extend Comcast to a certain number of days, but leave our ordinance as written in place?
Yes, I believe we could write something that would be lawful. As a general rule, we have to treat persons in the same classifications, or same categories, in the, in the, uh, in the same why. You know, in other words, you, people that are within the same like situation, like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, I would couldn't say Boy Scouts can do it for two weeks and Girl Scouts can only do it for a week. However, this is, uh, pursuant, we do have a franchise agreement with them, number one. And, number two, this is a, a type of business that we could segregate out, I, I think. Now, uh, if there's another cable company like AT&T, I think we would have difficulty saying that Comcast gets a month and AT&T gets three days. I, I can give you a little bit of insight into AT&T, not on a bad note, because I don't, I don't do that about the competition, but where there's not universe, they don't go door to door. My, my point, just simply from the legal point of view, is we can draft an ordinance that, or we can revise the ordinance so that a, a certain classification could have a lengthier time without opening it up to every other business or every other type of solicitation.
So it'd be just a cable company, or it would have to be a public utility?
Well, that's, I mean, we, I, I think we can write it, uh, I mean, obviously...
So right now, there's a lot of people selling electricity, there's a lot of people selling natural gas. They would be included in this agreement?
Well, I think we, yeah, they, they, you know, they might argue that. You know, this is not something that's like absolutely cut and dry red and white where there's just absolute rule, but the, the general rule is persons that are similar or classifications that we make will be upheld as long as they're reasonable.
And right now, the rule's pretty clear. It's three, three days for everybody.
Yes, exactly. And, and if you wanted to change that...
But is there any way that we can give, again, up to the board, permission for Comcast, extend the days by not changing the ordinance, but by simply by motion?
I would have to say no to that. We, we...
So there couldn't be like a variance?
No, we don't have variances, we have no provision for...
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make, you know, make it clear.
I mean, we can catch... When you had mentioned, I apologize, I mean, um, when you had mentioned that the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts come in on their request, and then that request for two days, isn't that what you're doing for them? You're giving them an areas? No. I don't really have areas.
Well, they got three days.
They only get...
Yeah, they only ask for one or two days.
Right. They're not, they're not, not helping for something else.
The issue here is just, uh, uh, it's a technical one, but it, I have to say what the law is.
Right.
And that is that our ordinance stands until we amend it by an ordinance. And we have to do that, um, in writing. Um, and so we would have to go to the next meeting for, you know, us to get you, get you an ordinance to adopt.
You mentioned that you're only soliciting a couple of hours here and a couple of hours there. Why is that? That doesn't seem very efficient to me. If you came to a town, you could do the whole town at once and then go to the next town.
Well, with eight hundred addresses, we can. It's just generally, what we find is people in different towns are home at different times. So, for example, there's a lot of people in Burberry that are home during the day.
Okay.
Um, there's a lot of signal tower workers in Burberry and Bradley, a lot. So we see a lot of not just knocking on the door and having to leave something behind, but she gets to talk to somebody. And that's the key. And we're always, I mean, John and I as residents here, we don't, we wouldn't like it if somebody was pestering us. So we don't do that to others when we're, when we're out. If, like, in, in most towns, there's an, there's a non-soliciting sticker or something that's on the door, if, if any, if there's anything on the door that says no soliciting, we don't even knock. It's just, and Comcast doesn't want us to because they don't want to get in trouble. So...
You two fellows do all the soliciting?
We do. I've, I, I've been with Comcast, as of the twentieth, I've been with Comcast for three years. Okay? Um, this may sound silly, but I've kept everybody else out of Peatone. Um, I live here, my whole office...
We have to do it.
There's about fifty of us in our office that handle the entire Southland.
Chris, you, let's keep it, you have a discussion item, bring it to the board.
Most of them now, that I live in Peatone, they don't try to get the turf. And my boss knows that I live in Peatone, so he won't give it to anybody. And the purpose of that is, I want people to feel comfortable when they see me in burk hots to know, that's what I tell people. And John's taught them that too. You know, I, I'm gonna give you the kind of deal that when you see me in burk hots, you're not gonna run, run and go, hey, there's the cable guy, let's get him. You know? And we own a business in, in Mantino, so I, everybody knows where to go ahold of me. I own cakes and pastries by jory. So, my wife and I. And I tell everybody that. So they always know where to go ahold of me if they have an issue. It's about customer service with us, and I understand that you guys are, you know, you have an ordinance now. We only have fifty-four days left, so if there's something that you can do to let us work with those fifty-four days.
And really, there's nothing we can do tonight because, as the attorney stated, this has gotta be by ordinance, so the ordinance would have to be written, brought back to the board at the next regular village board meeting and be adopted. Um, that's why last month, you know, we had, our last meeting, I shouldn't say we had this on the agenda, but we had nobody here and we really weren't sure, you know? So that's why we had asked you to come back tonight to, to talk to the board and extend...
I was actually on vacation last night, I apologize.
No, that's no, no need to apologize. I'm just telling you what happened, you know, as far as the delay, but in the meantime, you know, we sent it to committee so the committee can at least discuss it and try to come to some thought process on it, you know, prior to, uh, tonight's meeting. I was hoping maybe possibly there would be something that we could do without an ordinance, but, you know...
Well, here's the salesman in me. What, if, if ordinance is written in next, in two weeks and it's brought to the board, what would you as trustees have, what things, what things would hold you back from voting yes on that?
Well, that's what we need to have a discussion here as a board, you know, if this is something that we want to pursue, I mean, does the board want to extend in category, as the attorney was stating, the solicitation ability more than the three days?
What time do you start soliciting in the morning? Eleven. We don't start early. We generally go, um, when we used to work Saturdays, we would start at nine o'clock, but we're one way through Friday now. Um, we do, our hours are, are technically eleven from, from eleven to eight. Um, normally, if we're between six, six-thirty and eight, it's normally appointments. So we're not doing a lot of knocking at that point. That's generally when people are home after five o'clock in most towns.
Our solic, uh, solicitation permit doesn't permit you to go past seven PM, and I wouldn't recommend a change that.
That's fine.
What market share have you got here?
As I said, we have the entire town except for the subdivision behind Tony's on our list. And, um, I only have eight hundred addresses in that, in that list that we have that are either single subscribers or don't have a service. So of the rest of the town, except for, does that make sense? Except for the subdivision behind Tony's, because they didn't, that would have been too much, too many addresses to give to two people. Um, except for that subdivision, we have the rest of the town in our turf, and of all of those addresses, only eight, about eight hundred of them don't have our service or only have one product. The rest of them do. So for every one of those that we can get to convert, it's a little bit more money for, for Peatone.
Do you know what the average dollar amount is per household that we get from the franchise fee?
I don't. Not for Peatone, no.
I don't have that, like, this, right now, here to date, uh, for this year, we've got thirty thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and two cents. We're on course of about sixty-one thousand dollars for the year. And last year it was sixty thousand, five seventy-one.
I don't have those figures. I, I apologize, I don't. Just a lowly salesman.
I, I think really what we have to decide, I mean, as a board now, is if, do we want to amend the ordinance, or do we not want to amend the ordinance? I mean, in the meantime, if you decide you want to amend the ordinance, we could grant them the three days that they are...
Technically allowed.
Technically allowed. You know, that, so you could plug those days in. In the meantime, you know, the next board meeting is September the...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So it would be on, you know, that agenda, so you're, what, twenty days?
Okay.
So, I mean, then you would have, I mean, in your days...
September fourteenth would give us about thirty-one days left because they won't extend the turf for us. Um, they give it to us for, when they give us a turf, they give it to us for, um, third, for ninety days. 90 days, and then the way they've changed it now, they won't reassign it to somebody for at least three months after that, and most of the time, they're trying to wait six months to a year, so that they're not beating the heck out of people.
And after hearing what you had said, which would have been nice to see here last time, I, I would probably change the recommendation, but that's something that we can discuss.
For that kind of money, I agree with Trustee Huckey, I would-
I would go 30 days.
Or even if you go longer than 30 days, I like the idea of-
Because he's only gonna have 31 days.
Well, I would do, right, I could do 30 days at a 30-day increments, right, so next year, when they come in with their 90 days, they can come in, do their 30, come back, and do-
Right, that's what I'd do.
So sort of like what Burbana does, get a 30-day permit, and then come back and reapply to get another 30-day permit?
Correct, yes.
I'll just-
That would be wonderful.
I'll have the dissenting comment on this one, I just think that, you know, I learned a lot about you guys tonight, I appreciate what you do, I think what you're doing is a very hard job, and I give you credit for being able to do it.
It's a lot of fun to meet some very nice and special people.
Yeah.
We do, I believe, we really do.
However, I'm uncomfortable with opening Pandora's box of precedent that we set that allows more door-to-door solicitation in town, as narrow as, as narrow as I think the attorney will help us write this, I think we're gonna get inundated with more and more of this type of stuff from non-residents, guys that won't do as good a job as these gentlemen do, so I'm gonna urge a consideration of a no. You know, I don't like door-to-door solicitors, but if we can-
Thanks.
Not personally, I mean, if the attorney can write something that would restrict it to this, you know, maybe if somebody has a franchise agreement with the village, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
How narrow can we make it?
Now, we can, with Comcast, we've got cable, you know, services, and I think we could limit it to, to that.
There are four protocols.
Yes, we know, and I think that we would have difficulty saying that we limit it only to our franchisee, I mean, because other people have the right to compete and try to become franchisees, so I, I would have some trouble with that, I haven't, you know, I can do a little more research on that, I know that we can narrow it down to the, you know, essentially the cable internet phone services, so that would be the only one that 30-day renewal permits would apply to under the ordinance, I can do that, and I believe that's lawful, further than that, I have to look at it to see if we could do anything more than that and still argue it well, that we've treated everybody in the same category in the same manner, yes, sir?
Since that meeting, I did do some research, and comparing our present ordinance and looking at other communities near us, there is, there's a tendency now to penalize people that come to doors when there's a sign that says do not solicit, you see more regulations adapting to this, if it's posted on the door, it means stay away, solicitors, so they're-
Even if you're licensed.
Even if you're licensed and have the permit, if it says stay away, they're finding them the violations of going to a door that says do not solicit, our present regulations can say, I mean, the only offense we can get them for is soliciting without a permit, people that run around and do it, our ordinance doesn't say thou who goes to a door that has a sign do not solicit, they could have a permit, but some towns have, they've covered a lot of bases with different ways they write the ordinance, that's probably a little more detailed than our present one is, and I've given Mr. Bartley some, him and I can converse, and I can send him some things and see if he can maybe have a draft for the board or-
Sure. We drafted Tinley Park's ordinance as well as Oak Forest, we represent both of those towns, and so we've got-
Actually, I was just gonna suggest looking at those two, because they're probably the most comprehensive of the area.
Yes, we drafted both of those solicitation ordinances, therefore I-
So you gave them 30 days, Jim, huh? Okay.
No, we give them what the board wants us to do, that's your decision, that's not my decision, I only write the ordinance.
Just one other thing-
And of course, you know, there's constitutional issues with the ordinance, is the newspaper vendors and a couple of others get excluded by virtue of case law decision on free speech, or, you know, the free press, so they are a little tricky.
It really varies, and I'm sure the chief has done this, but like with Moni, they have from 9 AM, no earlier than that, or after 4:30 PM, on any weekday, or any time on a Sunday, or state, or national holiday, and anybody that's watching can go online, you don't have to purchase any no solicitation signs, you can go online and pretty much, here they are, you can put any of these signs up here, this is my favorite one, do not solicit here, but, you can put them up-
Is that the one that says the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts can come?
No, he said, but if you're the delivery guy, that's awesome, keep up the good work and have an amazing day, so you can, you can do that, I mean, it's, I checked that off.
Most of the, like Tinley Park, when we went and got ours in Tinley, they told us that it doesn't have to be a village sticker that says no soliciting, if it says no soliciting anywhere, that's off limits, so, and we respect that, you know, I wouldn't want somebody knocking on my door if I had that.
So is it the desire of the majority of the board to have the attorney draft an ordinance to come back at the September 14th ward meeting, making it as narrow as possible with that 30-day stipulation included, keeping our current times, and bring it back to the board for review, and, can I say yes?
Sounds good.
I have a question. Yes, if they, if they are allowed to come back and renew every 30 days, do they have to pay again for every 30 days?
In, in most municipalities, yes.
Yes, the answer would be yes.
And then, was there an issue on the amount, did you say anything about the fee that you-
We have, I think it's a $50 fee.
Fifty, fifty for the first one, if there's more?
Thirty-five, yes.
Yeah, Burbana is, they charge for the fingerprints, they charge, and then they charge $15 every month, Oak Forest charged $50 per month, Tinley Park charges, actually, they're one of the cheaper ones, they charge for a yearly fee, but most of the ones that are on a monthly basis are somewhere between $25 and $50.
I just wanted to know if there was any change that you want, that you want to put the fee in?
No, that wasn't true what you talked about in committee, that's right.
Yeah, same fee.
So we'll be back on the agenda for September the 14th, in the meantime, you know, you can do your three days.
Okay, but you still need me, pardon me, John and I to fill out that form and pay the $50 for the three days, okay, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, well, it's not really a motion, we're just giving direction, do we need a motion for that?
No, you go, and I'll prepare a draft ordinance and get it to you, so you can distribute it and be ready for the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Item C, possible amendment to amplifier ordinance, commercial amplifier fee.
The committee motion to move that fee from 250 to 100 dollars per year, and recommend, that's what we recommend.
Effective-
Immediately, as soon as we can have this made up in the next agenda or sooner.
For commercial, you want it to go from 250 to 100?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So again, that would be something-
Yeah, it's gotta be in writing, it's gotta be in ordinance, but it's a very simple one, I just take the current one, change it to 100.
Okay.
That'll be easy.
So we'll be able to vote on that next?
Sure will.
Next meeting we'll be able to?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Excess to come back and-
Yeah, it has to be, anytime we have an ordinance that sets a fee or sets something, it can only be amended by an ordinance, and that ordinance has to be-
Written and resident. Item D, Lisa Fredericks, Fire Pit Barn Grill, commercial amplifier permit, 306 North Harlem.
Okay, well, if it's gonna be amended, I'll wait till next meeting when you've done the jobs.
That would probably be a wise, a wise decision.
Well, hey, I would too.
And that would be a wise decision, September the 14th.
Okay.
So I, I have a motion to table-
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trustee March, seconded by Trustee Huckey, to table the amplifier permit application of Fire Pit.
Thank you.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Huckey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
And Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Item E, ordinance request for assigned variance to allow a four-by-eight real estate sign at 340 North Harlem, and we have, you're welcome.
My name's Doug Anderson of Macaulay Real Estate, this is a commercially zoned site that we're requesting a four-by-eight commercial sign, we've got seven and a half acres, we just listed there, we're hopeful that we can put the sign up, so attract a little more attention to, you know, possible user there, we don't really have any leads on what we try to get there, but it's hopefully some kind of retail establishment that would produce some sales tax revenue.
Two of those parcels are currently zoned residential.
Residential, right.
And one is zoned B?
B1.
B1, and where you wanna place the sign is the lot that's zoned B1.
Zoned B1, that is correct, I have a picture of the site.
I think we have a picture.
Except for the, the writing at the moment, how many acres of them?
Seven and a half acres, plus-
That's gonna be added to the sign.
Right, right, exactly, I was gonna say about, and our phone, our phone number will be on that side too.
Questions, discussion?
Is it a double-sided sign, or is it because both come north and south?
Yes, that's our anticipation, that's what we're gonna do.
How did you come into this property?
Mr. Bates called me, Don Bates called me, I'm not the owner, I'm the real estate agent on site, so I'm the real estate cow for Mr. Mystic Brands, Kevin Sidney Brands parents, and they had recommended that he use it, so.
Any other discussion, trustees, questions?
How much you gonna list that property for?
Oh, it's listed for $690, I think that's a little optimistic, but I'm gonna have to have that discussion with Don in a month or so.
I think it's at least the potential, right, to move forward.
I don't see any problem with it.
Any other discussion, if not, a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-11, an ordinance regarding a variance for the allowable signage at 340 North Harlem.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee March, to adopt said ordinance.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Item F, appoint Christmas commission members, last meeting, we adopted an ordinance establishing a new commission to create Christmas in the Village, and then on December the 12th, I'd like to appoint the following seven people to this commission, the ordinance calls for a seven-member commission, chair will be Mike Jones, trustee Mike Jones, also on the commission will be Steve Stein, superintendent of the Peatown 207 U. School District, Don English from First Midwest Bank, Rich Sheridan, the general manager of Terry's Ford, Sue Wackerlin, the manager of the Peatown American Legion, Nancy Cross, Tammy Cowherd, and an ex-officio committee member will be Donna Warner, Donna is asked to be part of this commission, and she will sit in at our commission meetings, take the minutes, and-
She's gonna be taking the minutes?
Yes.
So is she gonna be compensated for this?
Well, she is, she is volunteered, yeah, so yeah, she is asked, she is volunteered to be part of this commission, I think, and I appreciate that very much.
Do you have a motion?
Um, yes, a motion to appoint these members to the commission.
Approve the appointment.
Approve the appointment, so, motion by Trustee March, seconded by Trustee Huckey.
Mr. March?
Yes.
And Mr. Huckey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
The first agenda has been posted, the first commission meeting is 8:30 AM on Wednesday here at the village hall, these are open meetings, you know, the commission's an extension of the village, so they're subject to the Open Meetings Act, and anybody who's welcome to come in and sit in and listen to the discussion. This Wednesday is the first meeting, we posted that agenda last Friday, 8:30 AM.
Second.
No, that would be the 26th. Item G, authorize 2015 street project engineering and bid process.
Can we go through it?
Sure, go ahead.
We're looking to do four-inch asphalt patches, they have five different locations throughout the village, they would be, section on North Street, Howard Street, Goldview Drive, Garfield Avenue, and South Mill Street, Donna, we can get advertised this week, correct?
It should be in this week's paper, I took it, or sent it, right.
So we'd be looking at a bid opening of September 10th at 9 AM.
When will the promotion project be completed?
I think right now, our completion date says October 30th.
The questions, discussion, I know this came out of the committee.
Put a motion to approve.
Second, motion by Trustee Forsythe, seconded by Trustee Jones. Correct, to authorize the village attorney to prepare the documents.
Okay, Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Huckey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Questions of the press, correspondence, communications, petitions, again, we discussed during the committee, the whole community day, what a huge success it was, we've got the committee members, commission members, for the Christmas in the Village, December the 12th, also planning a Halloween trunk or treat event on Saturday, October 24th, those details will be announced very shortly, just, we'll have it in the paper, it'll be on the Village Peatown Facebook page, and in numerous other newspaper publications, or call me and I can give you the details, anything else from the board?
I want to mention the tree trimming one more time.
Oh, yes, thank you, I wrote big letters here, if you have not, if you could trim your trees above the sidewalks to seven feet above the sidewalk, seven-foot clearance above the sidewalk of your trees, anything else?
I have one comment to the residents, please shop local businesses, please, I know that we're a small town, I know that we don't have probably everything that you need and want, but please try to shop local in Peatown, thank you.
And that's even why it's more important for us to promote, you know, this community, if there's nothing else, I would-
I just wanted to ask, Troy, you know, we talked about the train whistle issue, and can you just give me a quick overview of what's involved, and I know we have problems with our streets and the two clos, and who regulates all this, I guess is the question, so.
The process, you have to evaluate different crossings throughout the village, and then there's a point system where you do improvements at a certain crossing, and they have to add up to enough to allow the quiet zone, it's kind of a complicated process, you have to go through the ICC, the railroad, you know, multiple site meetings with those folks, we did a quick look at it, and it seems like it would be a candidate to do some improvements on Wilmington Road, possibly, I believe, the crossing to the North Street was that? No, but closing a crossing would help, definitely, but I know, I'm sure the village is not looking to do that, so that's why you probably need to do improvements like concrete median or those plastic raised, you know, delineators. A couple of the streets, like you mentioned, have a problem because the parallel street with the track is too close to put the medians in. So that's kind of a challenge, where we need to look at it more.
And I think one of the things that was brought up in committee of the whole, are you familiar with West Street and Piatton Wilmington? Would that be?
That one, I think would, I think we could fit medians in there. I think it was the downtown ones that were the problem.
So could you leave Railroad Street open, but like, say, only allow a right turn, you know, like a turn away from the railroad instead of...
That might be an option, yes, if that would be, you know.
What would, on the railroad crossing way north up by the steel track? That would also have to be part of this program?
That, that's actually an option, where we want to start the quiet zone. When I talked with the person in our company that who primarily does these, he said, you might want to include that, but it might make it hard, because if you don't, you might hear it, you know, the village might hear the horn all the way at that crossing, and then it wouldn't matter, so you might have to expand it into that, which might make it a little more complicated, so those are kind of all the things we have to look.
Because when Kevin and I were first talking about it, we had included that one, correct?
And it doesn't mean you have to do an improvement at every single crossing, it's just you need a certain amount of points for the whole village to have the quiet zone throughout the village. It's kind of strange. You don't, you don't have to have an improvement at every crossing in order for them not to blow their horns. It's a village-wide thing.
Can you come up with a program that would be the minimal amount of improvements that would bring us in under the wire with the minimal amount of disruption?
Minimal amount of improvements, you're talking about?
Against the call.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much every town, that's what they want, the minimal amount. That's what we always try to do.
But I mean, if we were to conduct a study, if we wanted to conduct a study, cost-wise...
For us to conduct a study to see what's feasible?
Correct.
I can talk to our expert on it, but I don't think it would be much. I can get you those numbers tomorrow, to be sure.
And we can bring that back for discussion, the board at the next meeting?
We already took a quick look at it, just at no charge, that's where we kind of got this information from. He would need to look into it a little deeper.
If that's something the board wants to talk about, we can certainly bring it back.
Steve, the only concern, this is the farmer in me?
Sure.
The only concern I have with Wilmington Road is, if you put medians in there, how do you move equipment through there? And I'm not speaking, just me, there's, how many farmers in the area that use that? Because if you go...
Well, that would be, that would be one of the crossings that you don't have to improve.
Yeah, the next crossing to the south is Kennedy Road, and the train sit, that's their holding pattern, and Canadian National has talked about closing that, that crossing for the last six years. So if you close that, and then you don't allow there, let's go...
There's a lot, there's a lot of things to consider. I mean, Railroad Street, to me, would be a big consideration, whether or not, you know, that would work with strictly the right-hand turn. I mean, just, again, I mean, what we're doing right now is kind of talking, and I mean, if the board wants to talk about it a little bit more, we could try to gather a little more information and bring it back for discussion.
I don't think it would hurt to find out what the study would cost. I mean, if it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars, I don't want to do it.
No.
If it's five hundred dollars.
I'm just not sure if he has to go out to the site and look at things, or he can do it without, you know, so I'll check with him.
Okay. And we'll put it back on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, or compensation of specific employees of the public body. There will be no action coming out of closed session.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden?[1786.12]